Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is the time and place for Monday, December 8th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Item one is welcome and roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Osowski.
Here.
Berg.
Here.
Lunskey.
Here.
Friedols.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Informational items. Two point one's 2026 Projects Roads update. I think Mr. Lieberman has a quick update on the projects for next year.
Good evening, Vice President Weigel and members of the committee. This is our annual update intended to give city council a sneak peek at the projects that Engineering Department will be programming and requesting for construction in 2026. So we do this through a variety of funding sources, a variety of partnerships and different ways of executing projects. Those projects are all listed in the staff report towards the end, along with a map showing all of the projects, locations, et cetera. I'm prepared tonight to go through those if that's the committee's desire, or I understand with the weather outside and keeping things a little shorter, maybe I'm just available for questions if you have those.
Thank you, Mr. Lieberman. Any questions on the proposed projects for next year? Mr. Bean?
I'd just like to commend you for what we've got on here. I know one of my areas that I've had concerns on is Seventeenth Avenue South between Columbia Road and 20th. I see that's on the list. Appreciate that. And one other, just a quick question. There's not a lot of water main replacement projects. Are we catching up a little bit on the areas that need to have water replaced?
Mr. Bean, I believe there's still plenty of, plenty of water mains that should be replaced. It's a matter of budgeting in some cases. One thing we're doing different this year is we're also replacing, in these two sections, we're replacing the lead service lines along with the water main. That's different from in the past, so that requires a little bit more budget for that. But I think we have a good partnership with the Water Department and we're responsive to their needs and the projects that they're requesting, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Thank you, Mr. Lieberman, for your time, and I'm also excited to get the North Forty Second Street grade separation completed as well, or get it started at least. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Item number three is discussion items. Three point one's approved precinct boundaries for 2026 elections. We do this every couple of years, same ones as 22 and 24.
I move approval.
A motion to approve by Osowski, second by Friedols. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Three point two's committee appointments to the Special Assessment Commission and the Growth Fund Committee.
Approval.
We have a motion to approve by Osowski, second by Berg. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item three point three is the 2026 Arts Reggrant Program.
Thank you, Vice President Weigel and members of the committee. I'm Anna Henningsgard, a planner at the Planning and Community Development Department, and I'm here to present an update on the 2026 Arts Reggrant Program. For the upcoming program here, the total budget is $159,135, which is funded from 2163. The application deadline was November 14th, and we did receive 18 applications this year, which total requests amounting to just under 284,000. As in previous years, a review committee evaluated and ranked all submissions, and consistent with last year's approach, the committee placed an emphasis on supporting new organizations and new or substantially expanded projects. The group met on November 24th to review the cumulative ranking and develop funding recommendations, and those are attached in your staff report. Happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Henningsgard. Ms. Osowski, question?
Yeah, no, I just have a comment. I really like the organizations that you guys chose this year to support. I think they're all excellent art programs, and I really have no issue with that, but just in general, I don't feel that the city should be funding this stuff. I would rather see it come from, you know, private donors, and so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osowski. Ms. Berg?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, a motion to approve, second by Lunskey. I think, is it Ms. Berg or Ms. Lunskey that sits on this committee? Ms. Lunskey, so thank you for your time on the committee. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
No.
Or, I'm sorry.
I decline.
Opposed?
Yeah, I decline.
Okay. Ms. Osowski dissents. Appreciate that. I was getting on a roll. Three point four, 2026 CSG Program. Good afternoon, Ms. Sierra Johnson.
Thank you, Vice President Weigel, members of the committee. My name's Sierra Johnson. I'm a planner in the Planning and Community Development Department. I've been managing the Community Services Grant or CSG Program for the past two program years. Tonight, I'm here to present to you the funding recommendations for 2026 CSG. So the city opened applications for the locally funded CSG Program on October 9th with a deadline of October 30. Seventeen valid applications were submitted for total requests of $445,443, with a billable funding of $159,135. The Community Advisory Committee, or CAC, did not establish any urgent needs or priority areas for the 2026 CSG applications, and they met on December 1st and provided their rankings. So the CAC ranking and the recommendation for CSG 2026 can be found on the top of the second page of the staff report. All of the recommended allocations are for emergency assistance to prevent homelessness or homelessness services, indicating the magnitude of the need in the community. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Osowski, comment?
Yeah, I have comments. I guess I don't really understand how we can have so many nonprofits within our community doing the same thing. I mean, a lot of these are for emergency assistance to prevent homelessness, temporary assistance. I mean, it's all, I, I don't really understand that. I have a lot of concern about nonprofits continuously to pop, continuously popping up in our community. I don't believe United Way was even within our community a little while ago, like, what, when they come last year, I believe. I, I just don't understand how every non, I feel like every nonprofit that we get that comes here to try to help fight homelessness, the problem just keeps getting worse and worse and worse, and these nonprofits are continuing to have elevated budgets, and I'm really concerned about them, especially with the type of fraud that they are finding in the state of Minnesota with nonprofits. And so, is anybody even looking into these nonprofits? I mean, nationwide, the Salvation Army and United Way have been plagued with fraud. And so, is anybody actually looking into, like, their budgets when you get these requests for money?
So with their application, they do need to upload their most recent audits, and then we have review, we have folks review those in our finance department as part of the application process.
Okay. Um, are any of these nonprofits providing services to illegals?
Not that I'm aware of. No, sorry.
Mr. Conlon, welcome to the party.
Thank you. Committee member Osowski, there, we don't put guidelines on the program requirements for each agency. Each agency has their own guidelines of who they assist, so we don't have any guidelines as far as our funding goes. Federal funds come with some requirements, CDBG does. These local program dollars do not. One additional item, too, with regard to the, I guess, oversight of agencies, we operate on a reimbursement basis for most, for the most part, and for any funds expended, they are required to show us proof of expenditure. So like, if that's, you know, if there's assistance to an individual who needs rental assistance, for example, we get a copy of the check and, you know, made out to whoever and proof that it leaves their bank account. So there is, there is a requirement for showing that they are expending the funds appropriately and within the grant guidelines.
So are the funds that they receive from the city kept in a different fund within the organization, and we know exactly where our money is going, or does it actually go into their general budget and they're just providing you enough receipts to get to the $31,000?
They would, they would have to provide receipts where they put those funds. There's only a couple that meet the threshold of a risk assessment to receive the funds upfront. Most receive it as a reimbursement basis, but if they're considered a low risk based on our analysis, they can get 90% of the funds upfront. They then show us how they spent that money, and then once they have shown us how they spent the money, they can receive the remaining 10% of their grant.
Do we get a list of who they're spending the money on, like, names?
Generally, we redact that information, or the information gets redacted. When we do monitoring of agencies, for example, we do go in and test a certain number of the beneficiaries of those programs, so we might take 10% of the folks who receive assistance from a program. We check those files when we go on site, and we can verify that they have the proper documentation for each individual that receives assistance. So when we monitor agencies, that's typically our approach, and then within those agency files, we can see if, you know, when we look at an individual's files, we can see they have a driver's license, they have this, they have that, that their document, their file is complete. So we test that when we monitor agencies. Not every agency gets monitored every year, but when we do go to monitor based on different risk factors, that is what we look for.
Is anybody trying to look at the names on some of these lists and see, you know, what people are receiving multiple services from all the different entities and nonprofits?
So the, the agencies generally work together through the Community Agency Networking Association, or CANA. There's also a CARES Act Group, or a CARES Group, which is the Continuum of Care Group. They meet, actually have been meeting weekly as of late to discuss different cases, and a lot of these, most of the agencies, and I think all that I know of that are receiving funding, do communicate with one another on who is receiving assistance. In most cases, when someone comes for assistance, they might need, let's say, $1,500 to address their rental arrears. You know, some agencies have a cap of $400 to $500, but they know they need additional funding, so the social worker at St. Joe's, we'll call the social worker at Salvation Army, who then also contacts another agency to see how they can most effectively help someone. But, you know, we're still a small enough community that a lot of the social workers and case managers in our community know one another. They know the folks that they are assisting, and they're in communication with one another to try to avoid duplication of services, and that's what that CANA and CARES Group also exists to help prevent that duplication.
Okay. Um, one, I mean, I have some issues with a lot of these entities, but, you know, the community is united in partnership. When I read a little bit about their application, it seemed like this is the way I saw it, is that they're a nonprofit that distributes money to nonprofits. And, I mean, they had St. Joe's, they had the Salvation Army on there, so now are we donating money for someone? I mean, I thought this was our job, and now we're giving money to them so they can distribute it?
I, I can clarify that the Cup Fund is kind of what it's colloquially known as, has been around for many years. It was actually an effort by a lot of area churches who had separate programs back in the day, who might be receiving calls from people in need, to funnel money to one sort of collective group to serve as an emergency backstop. So while most folks, when we talk about, like, rental assistance or utility assistance, each agency has some pot of funds that are unique to their agency. Salvation Army does a Red Kettle fundraiser, so they have those funds available. St. Joe's is part of the Catholic churches that are supporting them, they have those funds available. When other funds, funds are expended and there's nothing else left, the Cup Fund is a backstop to make sure that there is no shortage of funds. Additionally, these are the funds that the Grand Forks Police Department relies on in after hours, so if there is no resource and there's someone in need, or if there is, let's say, someone who needs a bus ticket, you know, to get somewhere or needs, you know, a tank of gas to get home and they are stranded with no resources, sleeping in a car when it's 20 below zero, this is the fund that helps those situations get through. So that's why it's, it's, it's kind of a relic of many years ago that has, since the dissolution of Community Action, kind of found a new life. So the agencies involved, there's a requirement that they use their own funds first before accessing the Cup Fund. It really is just kind of a backstop in those emergency situations and a resource for the police department.
All right. I have a hard time saying that, or believing almost that people can't get resources when we're looking at a list of, you know, a bunch of nonprofits doing exactly the same thing. So I, whatever, I guess. The Community Action Program Region Six, is that just community, is it the, the community that's covering Grand Forks now, because they are no longer?
Yeah, so that, that's the region out of Jamestown. They're taking on one of the programs our Community Action used to do, but given that this funding that went to Red River Valley Community Action is tied up with the state and a federal process to be realigned, they have taken on some of those programs and they've applied for support. All that money will stay to support individuals and families within our community. But yeah, they're based out of Jamestown, but they have staff here that they've hired, and the Grand Forks staff are the ones responsible for actually carrying out the program.
All right. Who writes the, like, the rules for this program? Like, is that on us as a city council? Do we get to determine?
Yeah, so the, the CSG Program description is, is what we utilize to, as a basis of the program. That was approved most recently, it would have been March or April of this year, along with our consolidated plan and some other related documents, but it is approved by city council, updated as needed.
If I could add in, this was created several years ago, and it was meant to be a complement to the CDBG Program, which are federal funds, and so the city council at that time set aside funds that would complement CDBG, but it would be city funds that would be augmenting the CDBG fund, so.
So we just follow the?
It's complimentary, but no, it was a city council determined program, funded program, and has continued over several years, and certainly we're administering the program, but city council is our policymakers. You're, you are the ones that are ultimately determining whether you, how you want the program, if you want the program, and if you want the program funded, that is on you, and typically we do this through the budget process. That's why we're trying to execute as part of the 26 budget. I would say the other thing, Councilmember Osowski, is we've had a few meetings with all the various agencies regarding homelessness and housing, and I think what our findings are, that the organizations, for the most part, are complementary to one another, they're working well with one another. The other, the final thing we've heard is there's lots of stress and strain on all these organizations, and I think we've had two organizations that have gone away, just for funding reasons. My guess is there, there is more need. My guess is there's going to be more consolidation in the future, and as we go through this process, I think it's going to become harder and harder, and the city's probably going to have to get more and more involved, but they understand the city council's wishes to consolidate, to integrate, and to work with one another, and that's, have been our findings through the meetings, that really they are working well together, and they'd want you to know that this evening, Councilmember Osowski, and that's what we've heard in our meetings.
Right. I guess, I don't feel that social programs are really a part of the city, they're around by the county, and I, I disagree that we kind of put our hands into it. I think we should leave it at the county level. I have a hard, like I said, I have a hard time believing that this problem just keeps getting worse and worse and worse, and we keep throwing more money at it, and we keep getting nonprofits, and, you know, no one comes up and tells us good news, they're just telling us how bad the problem is. And so, I, I disagree that continuing to pad these NGOs' pockets is, is doing our community any good, especially when you actually sit down and look at some of their inflated budgets over the past couple of years. And so, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osowski. Comment by Ms. Berg?
I have a question. Do all of these agencies using HMIS?
I believe, I believe most of them do.
Okay.
I, I can't say for sure for each agency.
Sure.
I know a couple of them do.
I encourage those who are receiving these funds to start working with HMIS application to avoid duplication of services so that you're continuing to track who receives money and continue to work together with those other agencies. I appreciate the time that the CAC has spent on this. I think the agencies that they've identified are exactly what needs to be funded at this time, and I move approval.
We have a motion to approve by Berg, second by Lunskey. And a comment?
I just wanted to say, I think all the nonprofits do, they don't do exactly the same thing. I know it says prevent homelessness, but what they actually do, some work with families, some work with utilities, some work with rent shortages, and I know they all work very hard, and I don't see this problem being solved or going away. I think it's a really hard job, and I just want to say thank you to all the agencies in Grand Forks that work so hard for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Lunskey. Further comments? Seeing none, we do have a motion by Berg and second by Lunskey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one. Osowski dissents. We are on item three point five, 2025 Holiday Bonus Hours, something we've done for the last bunch of years. Motion by Osowski, second by Berg. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Three point six, Letter of No Objection for Project Number 9074, UND Campus Fiber Redundancy Plan.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve by Ms. Osowski, second by Mr. Bean. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Three point seven is Budget Amendments and Bit Awards for Various Departments. We have A, B, C, D, E, and F. Instead of going through all of them individually. Comments, Ms. Osowski?
I have comments. I guess the first comment I have is, I really appreciate the Police Department working, I mean, I've noticed that the overtime has gone down with the budget amendments, and so I feel like we're doing a little bit better of a job budgeting for that, so I just want to say thank you. I believe a couple of years ago, it was at like $500,000, so that's really gone down, and this is stuff that they just really can't predict, and I, I think, although, you know, we're still over budget on it, I think that they do a great job. My other comment is on the hotel motel tax. Great news that it is coming in strong again, and they'll be above budget approximately $50,000 to $100,000, which is great. I like to see them relying on their hotel motel funds, but if, you know, this isn't the first year we have came by and approved an increased budget amendment for Visit Grand Forks, and so I still, I know it's already done and over with, but I think that they should have paid back the $90,000 that they still owed, because here they're going to bring in an extra $50,000 to $100,000. They could have easily started making small payments towards us on that $90,000, but it's hard to watch us vote on forgiving their loan, and then now we're approving them additional funds. So, I don't know, I guess I, can we take them one by one when we vote on them, or?
We can. We can vote on them individually.
Yeah, I'd like to vote on them individually, please.
Any comments about other budget amendment-related items? Seeing none. First one is A is Vehicle and Equipment Funding Recap.
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve by Osowski, second by Berg. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. B is Sanitation Collections Request to Purchase Front Load Sanitation Truck.
Move approval.
Motion by Osowski, second by Berg. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. C is Police Department Overtime.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Osowski, second by Berg. All those, seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. D is Police Department Vehicle Maintenance.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Osowski, second by Berg. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. E is Police Department Approved Sole Source Purchase of Axon Taser Weapon Police Device.
Second.
Motion by Osowski, second by Berg. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Yeah, all right, maybe the left side of the room will get involved here. Item F, Hotel Motel Lodging Tax.
Move approval.
Motion to approve by Lunskey.
Second.
Second by Berg. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one with Osowski dissenting. Three point eight, Award Contract for Project 8984 Police Department Renovation Phase Number One.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Osowski, second by Berg. Comments by anybody? A bunch of local contractors, which is great to see. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Three point nine, Public Works Surplus Depart, or Surplus Equipment. Motion to approve by Osowski, second by Berg. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Three point ten, Northern Plains Nitrogen Update and Letter of Intent Agreement Extension. Mr. Phelan?
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve by Osowski, second by Berg. Is there a chance that you'd? We have a motion to approve by Osowski, second by Berg. Is there a chance that you amend it and go for one year instead of six months?
Yeah, I will. I'll change my motion. I know that we kind of talked about it before. But can we get this back just every one year and not every six months? I mean, they haven't made much progress since 2013, so.
We certainly can. And we went to six months just because we wanted updates. But let's go a year. And if there's a needed update to city council, because there's some good or, you know, not so good news, we'll be back here to provide you an update. But they are, they're working hard on it. They've hired an investment firm to help them out. They have offtake agreements that have been accomplished. So it's still a heavy lift, but they're still hard at it. So we're here to help facilitate their success when and if.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Anything you want to add, Mr. Sandy?
Can you hear me okay?
If you could speak a little louder, that'd be great.
I'm yelling into my phone. They need to turn up the volume in the room.
John, John might be able to for you.
Yeah, no problem. No, nothing, nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you, President Sandy. We have a motion by Osowski, a second by Berg, I believe, for a one-year extension. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. 3.11, Pre-Application for Tax Incentive from Enclave Companies. Mr. Phelan?
I'll be quick. And I got a call from Councilmember Veen this afternoon. So I said I'd hit some, go over this application process. Remember, we do pre-application. Pre-application is really intended to say, is the city council interested in having this project go through a review? And then if you vote in the affirmative, then we come back with a full application. And in this case, I would plan, if you approve in December, I'd come back in January with the full application. And that would set off the public hearing phase of the project. This one, we're planning on a five-year, only up to a five-year, which means it's within the City of Grand Forks' authority. So we wouldn't go out to the various other taxing entities. The other had questions is, this will provide city growth and need for housing in our community. And we've had a couple of letters, and I've shared with you prior, you know, Alter is encouraging, is just two organizations, Alter, the Grand Forks Air Force Base, are encouraging the City of Grand Forks to partner with the private sector to build various housing units for their growth and development. So they're relying upon the city to continue to grow the, the city with housing units. In this case, it is 76 units. They are, they all are market-based. It's on the east side of Furniture Row, south of Target. So you, we approved the low and moderate income unit. This is essentially plus or minus on the other side of the road. But it'll be a market-based unit. Right now, the other difference in this project, it is annexed into the city. So the land is taxed as commercial. On the 15th, there's going to be a public hearing, and it's going to change it so that it allows that an apartment complex can be built on this site, not just a commercial structure. So that'll be up on the 15th, as well as this pre-application will be at the same time. And because it's annexed, right now, that lot is valued at $401,000, which brings in approximately $7,000 in taxes. Right now, the project with land and improvements is valued, what the developer is saying is estimated value is around almost $13.5 million. If we assumed a taxable value of $12.5 million, that would mean $205,000 of taxable value that would come in. So it's a substantial, almost $200,000 more, and just in growth with the 76 units. There was discussion about vacancy. What's the vacancy? And I've been at a few other meetings where I get called out that I don't know the exact vacancy rate. And so what I, what I've said is, I'm not sure what the actual vacancy number is, because they're all surveys. And all that I know is it's relatively low in our historical memory. So currently, right now, the Apartment Association is in around 3.2%, which is very low for them on their survey. And previously, we, there was a survey when the Reserve by Northridge was here. Their financing group did a survey of 876 units, and their vacancy rate came back at 1.3%. The City of Grand Forks, we did our own ad-hoc survey, and we surveyed 5,600 units, and we came back at about 1%. And that was back in middle of summer. And so the interesting thing to note on the Apartment Association, over the last two to three years, it's only gone down. So this 3.2 is an all-time low point. So we continue to go down in that vein. So I think there is need. Most of the financial performers, the banks assume that there's going to be a 5% vacancy rate in their units as part of the financing. And I think when we had Mr. Shil did a housing kind of review for us, we looked at a 6% to 8% would be a, would be a healthy vacancy rate in that area. So we're well below. We need the housing. We have lots of great projects coming, whether it's from Alter, the Grand Forks Air Force Base, Grand Sky, Agresto, UND. Enrollment continues to grow and develop. And thank goodness, we got Memorial Village One and Two done. They're also renting out, 100 students are staying at The Verge by the Alara Center. So if the city had not promoted any of that housing, there would have been no room for students. So thank goodness, we did move forward with that. Is there a need for an incentive? And this is where I talked to Council President Sandy, and I think Councilmember Veen agreed with that. Even though it's a five-year or less, and which is a pretty standard thing that we approve, whether it's through remodeling exemptions, rent-a-son zone, new homes, we don't do reviews, financial reviews, but the sense is, it still would be a good idea that we do it. So when I come back with the full application, we'll also have a third-party financial review, even though it's a five-year request in this case. So we will add that to, to our exercise before we come back in January. So with that, we're asking to move forward through the, approve the pre-application. We'll come back in January with the full application with further information. And likely, at that time, we'll have a recommendation based upon further information. And then we'll ask you to set the public hearing, probably about a month later. And I think right now, the timeframe would be early February. We would look to review and approve this. And this developer would like to get moving forward this spring. And it will take about a year or so to get these units completed. So that's the update. That's what we're asking you tonight. It's a, it's a multiple-part review, but you got to start with the pre-app. Any question? I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Ms. Osowski?
Yeah, I have comments. No questions. I guess I still disagree that our, that apartments are considered a primary sector business, and they even qualify for pilots. You know, if you, if people have been watching the news, you can tell that there are other communities within our state really pushing back and questioning a lot of these pilot programs, and, you know, what the process is, what qualifies, what doesn't. I mean, sometime in the near future, I would hope that the state would actually rule on some of the questions that they have been asked about the pilot program. But at this point, I disagree. Apartments are primary sector business, therefore I don't believe they qualify for a pilot. So thank you.
Ms. Osowski, comments? Ms. Berg?
I have a question. Mr. Gosted, for pilot considerations, is there something that we have to determine or assess if, like the need for the pilot to happen? Am I recalling that correctly?
There are really two requirements. One is, is it a revenue-producing enterprise? And that's a, there's been AG opinions that state that that's a factual determination by the governing body. Also, there is factors to consider, and that's, that's the process for the public hearing is for the competitive, if they're competitive, and I don't have the statue right in front of me, but if, some findings with respect to the competitiveness with respect to other entities that may be out there that are competing against this particular enterprise. So those are two of the primary factors that, that the council would have to, to review.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berg. Ms. Lunskey?
Does the five years start on the day it's approved, or the day they get their certificate of occupancy?
The data, day of finalization, date of project completion.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Veen?
Mr. Phelan, thanks for following up with some of the questions I asked you of. And I'd like to maybe just reiterate some of them. I think, for me, I just wanted to make sure when we make decisions or recommendations like this, that we're substantiating with factual data and statistics or whatever. And there's, there were three of them that I was concerned about. First of all, does the city actually need additional residential units? I mean, I don't think we should be giving tax break unless there's a specific need, and that need should be able to be calculated or determined by some standardization that we all can agree gives, gives the actual data that we want. And then the other thing is, if there is a need, does the proposed housing project actually need a pilot from the city? Because this is a form of public-private partnership. And is there also that need? And that can't be a guessing, or we'd like to, I guess, that's why I recommended we go back and look at what Baker Tilly would say, because that will substantiate, yeah. It, you know, it would, it's necessary to, I think, give whatever is the standard rate or return when you, when they do the investment. And then to understand what the risks are to the city. Because obviously, if we don't give it to them, they may or may not do it. I don't think we know for sure if they're going to follow through with the project. If we do, if they don't, we forego future taxation. If we do give it, obviously, we give up, in this case, five years. But then after the five years, we get full taxation, which we hope to recover much of that. So, and that's a bit of a risk that we just have to determine, I guess, within ourselves, will they or will they not go forward with it? So I think having that information would be extremely helpful. I wouldn't support it now with what, with the information that I have. But if we were able to get more of that data, that would, that would certainly be helpful. And, and the other thing I wanted to have a little bit better understanding is, is what is the growth pattern of the city over the last, whatever, three census or whatever? I know Mr. Brooks had looked at some of that. But I'd like to understand what our actual growth is. It seems like we've built a lot of apartment buildings, and they seem to be fairly full. So I'm assuming we do have growth?
We do, we do. And I think you can look at, whether you believe the census or not, we've grown significantly over the last 20 years and over the last 10 years. So, and we're growing currently, you know, since the last census in 2020. So we were at about almost 60,000 in the last census, and we're well over that number right now. So, so we continue to grow and develop. We haven't stayed the same over the last 20, 30 years.
We don't have any other data, though, to support. I mean, it's, I'm making my observation, but we don't actually have data that supports that, except for the actual census data, right?
We do.
And sometimes we question if that's accurate, but at least it's consistent. It's the best we have.
Yeah. And the census data typically with Grand Forks, because we're more of a transient population, the Grand Forks Air Force Base and UND, is generally, you know, we're probably a little bit undercounted. But even when we've done the official census, it's generally, we've been, we've had more population than what was projected before the actual census itself. So Grand Forks is growing in development. And the other part of the risk is that we're, this is already a built-out area for infrastructure. It's an infill area built. And so we're just trying to build out areas that are, we've already invested, you know, millions upon dollars with infrastructure. And now we're trying to get some return on our investment by having these various lots invested on. And really, at this phase, and I'll certainly answer more of the question, get more of the questions answered for the pre-app. But really, the pre-app is that you're serious enough that you're agreeing to go to the full application process to make a final determination where you want to move forward. So this is like a two-step process of, you're interested enough to do some further analysis and making a final decision. I think in this case, probably sometime in January, I'd be back with all the information about, you know, what we're recommending preliminarily, what the financial analysis says, and with a recommendation, and then to set up a public hearing. This is really meant to just have a cursory review. Are you interested enough to move this project forward through the process?
And maybe if you could look at one other thing I had looked at or thought of, and that's just supply and demand. If there is a lower supply and a higher demand, what's the impact on rental rates?
Yep. And I, and I can do, I'll share that when Mr. Shil was here from Praxis, we had attachment. It showed, you know, one of the market indices showing that Grand Forks, our rents have gone up significantly over the last, I think it was four or five years. And I'll share that report again. And so it showed the supply is, you know, not what it is, what it used to be. So therefore, rents are going up, and they're going up significantly. And I'll share some of that report that Mark Shil from Praxis had presented. I think it was back in the July of, early this year timeframe, and I'll share that information, too.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan.
And I would say, some projects you're not going to see. So I don't want to be the bad gate, good or bad gatekeeper, but there are some projects that are not moving forward because they're going to need more than five years. So we have a project that is willing to move forward within this five-year incentive period. But there's projects like The Domain, and The Domain was going to be a mixed-use development, $42 million investment, 160 units at the proposed 47th Avenue area where the new Hugo's is proposed. That project needs more than five years. That one's been put on hold. There was another one on King's View, a $12 million investment, 45 units. Again, the developer's saying they need more than five years on an incentive. They are not moving forward with that project. So there, there are two projects. We said it's not worthwhile for us to move forward because our government partners are not going to participate. So they're just holding on those until the time is right. Interest rates, construction costs, that they can move forward with those projects. So I, we don't bring every project here, and those are only the two projects that I know of that have come to me that I said I just don't think are viable at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan.
Aye.
Ms. Berg?
I was concerned that there wasn't a Baker Tilly analysis or outside analysis. So I'm very glad that we're doing that. And because that will come back to us, I will move approval on the pre-application process, expecting more information.
We have a motion from Ms. Berg, second by Mr. Friedols.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Osowski?
How much do we pay Baker Tilly to do each one of these?
Councilmember Osowski, currently, right now, we charge $2,500. And we're probably proposing that to go up. And that's been a number we've used for a while.
That's how much we charge.
Charge the developer.
Right. How much does Baker Tilly charge us?
Yeah. It depends on the project, but it's probably twice that much on a project like this. So we probably should raise that amount. It was always seen as a, as a partnership between the city and the developer to get some third-party answers. But I would say the 2,500, I think, for the next year, we should probably raise that up to a higher value. I don't think that's going to hamper any development, but we will plan to do that.
Thank you.
All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries six to one with Osowski dissenting. Item 3.12, Water Treatment Plan Redevelopment. Mr. Phelan?
Thank you, Vice President Weigel. I know, I think Meredith Richards from the city has reached out to you. So we're trying to get the water plant project moving forward again. And this is the city staff's attempt to, to move it forward. So we know we had the review from the development strategies. That was more of a planning level. That was kind of a phase one development. And there were some pluses and minuses. And I, when we met early, earlier this year, we put it on a pause just because there wasn't kind of a really overwhelming thought of let's move forward. So what we're proposing here is, it still is a public-private partnership in the water plant. We do think this is an extraordinary opportunity. It's probably good that we took a pause, because this really is our, our last, really best opportunity to redevelop an area in the post-flood area. You know, this is really our last opportunity to do something extraordinary. So let's really be smart in what we're doing. As you recall, as per the planning, I think some of the really good takeaways were, we wanted a market-supported vision. And so I think we still want to do that with, you know, a rich development that will be everlasting. The other thing they came up with, I think was good, was a district strategy. This is kind of a downtown south area that we want to connect to the overall downtown area, but it has an ability to be quite distinct and different. So I think those things are all valid. Not only a new district, but we wanted to integrate it into the Forks area of our namesake, into the River area, into the Greenway, and really find, do something extraordinary. So I think those are all valid things. So what we thought were, and this, and I think one, the other thing is the planning document validated is, our thought was, and he, almost playing off what Councilmember Veen and his other life works on with the Teddy Roosevelt Museum, how do we do something extraordinary in Grand Forks here? So our thought were, number one, to come back to, so really, this is kind of a, almost a pre-application for this. We're asking that, can we just generally come back to you with, number one, with a request for qualifications for, for development firms as a team? So we'll come back under a prescribed request for qualifications. So we'll come back under a prescribed request for qualifications. And this would all be done between city staff and the city council. We want to make this, we don't need consultants at this point. So based upon that RFQ, you would, we would come back and the council would be, have their hands on the steering wheel. We would shortlist firms that were interested in, to further develop that space. And we would invite them as a second phase of this, we would invite all those shortlisted firms to come up with their development plan. And then the second part of that, as part of the RFP, we would then, you know, rate, grade the RFPs based upon the shortlisted firms. And then ultimately, we would have the city council approve the best firm with the best plan to move forward. And basically, when we move forward with what we think is the best firm with the best plan, we would then start doing kind of some of these overall master planning with that, with that group. And I, to create an extraordinary project, we'd have to put some parameters around it. Both the RFQ would be approved before it went out, you would approve the, any of the firms based on the RFQ. And then if we got so far and we shortlisted firms, you would approve the RFP. And then, of course, you would approve the firm that came out of the RFP. And then from there, we would, we would set the news course, which is really setting up the master plan. And part of the master plan would be, what do we need to do with the water treatment plant from a demolition perspective? What do we need to do from a infrastructure perspective in that area? What do we need to do from a traffic, parking and all those things? Because we will have then selected a firm with a, with a plan that we really like and then we start working on the particulars. That's probably a year to year and a half process. And really, we have so many great things going on in our community and this would kind of be on that same glide path of having something, probably the first phase would be, we'd start to try to roll out by the end of this decade. So it's a lengthy process, but by the time we get done with an underpass at Forty Second and Demers, we'll be working on this project and it'll just be more extraordinary things from Aggristo to the underpass to this project. So we're just asking, you know, we can move forward with that concept with all the details coming back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Comments?
No comments.
Ms. Osowski?
Yeah, so you're saying that the next thing, so I guess we all kind of rejected phase one was my thought, so I thought we would be starting back over at phase one, but I guess here we are. How, how much will it cost us to then put out like the RFQs?
That's going to be the best part. So we're going to do this as staff, we know enough to move it forward now. So we're going to gain lots of ideas from lots of great firms for very little money because we're going to be asking them for information on what they would do. And so this is going to be a low-cost, high-opportunity up for us.
Okay. How many man-hours has the City of Grand Forks then put into this so far? I mean, we pay Meredith, she retired and now she's back on our payroll. So, I mean, we can count all of her hours.
I think Meredith has been our internal consultant, probably on this. She's doing other things, but working part-time, twenty hours a week.
Right.
But a part of that is this, she's probably our one outside, or one expense we have in the City of Grand Forks. I'm salaried, so I can work eighty hours a week and it doesn't matter on this. And hopefully, I'm doing mostly good when I work on these projects. So we don't have a whole lot of expense, other than Meredith Richards has provided some strategic support, which I think has been very good. And Shilk, we want, we've asked her to continue on to be our internal person that I can work with and the team can work with and more importantly, work with US City Council.
Right. And like, I really feel like when it came to us the last time that, I can't even remember who made that presentation to us, but that they didn't really take into consider, into consideration any of our thoughts or things like that. And we kept being presented the exact same thing after we all commented on, on, you know, the improvements that we'd like to see made. So I just don't want to go down that path again where we just get something big and grand put in front of us and then we're right back to where we are. Because although it's not costing us a lot of money, I mean, your time is very valuable, Mr. Phelan. I don't want you working eighty hours a week, you have a family. And so I don't want any of our staff working eighty, eighty hours a week. And I don't want them, you know, setting aside their other work just to work on this. I'm all for kind of moving towards a demo and things like that, but I, I really don't think, I'm not sure what's going to be presented, but I have a feeling it's going to require probably a pilot. You know, it's, I mean, it's gonna probably take us demoing that, which needs to be done anyways. And so I, I'm not really that excited about this project at all. I think we have a lot of other projects currently on our plate. I understand that it is a prime plot of land, but right now, it's not doing any harm, you know? I mean, yeah, the building's a little bit ugly, but it's not causing problems, you know? It's, it doesn't need to be demoed right this second. I would just see us kind of hold back on some of these, you know, larger projects until we can actually complete some of the other projects. And I noticed in here, it still talks about, you know, the public space, which just, I'm not interested in at all. And I, you know, I feel a lot of people have that concern, especially the last time we talked about Epic, you know, and just the city being able to manage those public spaces. And so I'm not looking forward to this really at all. I would be okay with just moving for a demo right away, but I'm not on board with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osowski, Ms. Burke?
Yes, I think I'm on another spectrum of Ms. Osowski's comments. I was on the committee, I saw ideas start to come and the excitement that the community members had on this committee. We have one, one opportunity to do this right. Most cities don't have an opportunity to expand their downtown area and we do. And I think being strategic about this and the way Mr. Phelan described it, will be part of that process a lot more than we were that first time, where we're going to be giving more, more feedback and it should be received a lot, a lot better. I was disappointed in the last presentation that the company we had used made, it was very lackluster. And I, I think it's great that we're looking at other agencies to help us do this. I, I'm excited to see the opportunities to come from this, so I'm going to move approval.
We have a motion to approve by Ms. Berg. Is there a second, Mr. Friedols? Can you have a comment as well?
So I'm really looking forward to, I think, having this a competitive RFP process and, you know, show us what you got, what ideas are coming to. Because, yeah, I think we all kind of agreed, the last one was kind of, wasn't, wasn't, didn't blow us away, right? And so I think setting this up for a little bit more, I mean, this is going to take time. So just getting a little bit more competition in it, some new ideas, some other stuff, I think will be really good, so.
Mr. Friedols, I think my twelve-year-old would say the presentation was mid, is what he says, so.
I can't believe that's on record.
I know.
Mr. Bean?
No, I, originally, as I saw this, I was questioning it too, but I guess we had a pretty lengthy discussion today. And there's a lot of things, opportunities, I guess, as we move forward. I mean, this is a historic site, we got a once-in-a-lifetime time to redo this and I think it really takes more than what we've done so far to date. So I like the idea of the RFQ process because if we don't feel we've got anybody qualified, we don't have to do anything yet. We'll be able to at least get that process going and see what happens because it's more than just planning, it's going to be creativity and strategic designer that has a higher quality to it than, than just the planning. So, and, and then we can look at the do-nothing alternative yet. It doesn't take that away from us. And if there is any way, although I know we're speculating, speculating a reuse of the existing facility, that doesn't take it off the table, I think that needs to be at least analyzed as a part of this. It would be the most cost-effective, but it also has got to deliver. So I mean, this is the process you're explaining and this would be the next step in that process. It's, it's kind of like phase two for me, but it's a little bit like doing phase one over. It's kind of a combination of those two things. So anyway, I'm, I'm in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Bean. Ms. Lonsky?
Does it have to be a private-public relationship? Like, can, can someone buy the land because it is the flood wall or do we have to own that?
Council Vice President Weigel and Council Member Osowski, or Lonsky, sorry. Right now, the City of Grand Forks owns the land and so we need to enter a competitive process as part of it. I mean, we could just go out and, you know, who member wants the land, take the highest bidder, but I think we want to be more strategic than that. But because it's public land, we want to make sure that we've done it in a competitive manner. We could shift it over to the Jobs Development Authority, but Mr. Gosted would say, well, that's pretty close to the City of Grand Forks. That's what he's advised us in the past. So that's why we're trying to do a competitive process. So whatever happens with the, the land, we've gone through a process where the city council has selected, you know, a project, a firm, or hasn't, because it's public property. And it's going to be an everlasting thing, so whenever someone would look back, how did that group get to develop that property?
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion by Berg and second by Friedols. Further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item three point one-three, cancellation of December twenty-second.
Move approval.
Committee of the whole meeting.
Second.
Motion to approve by Osowski, second by Friedols. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries unanimously. Item four, city council member discussion or comments, Ms. Osowski?
No, thank you, Danny.
Mr. Ms. Berg?
Yes, I'm not sure who could potentially answer this, but if there's a pub crawl going on, is it okay for an establishment to require a drink purchase to get a stamp?
I think probably the only one that could answer that question left, Sheri Lundmark, but I will, I'll, we'll follow up with her and we'll get an email out to all of you on that inquiry. Yep, she's our, our Google of all these random things like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berg. Ms. Lonsky? Mr. Friedols?
Everyone be safe tomorrow and watch the weather and keep load-endy roads on your, on your, on your phone.
Mr. Bean? I don't have anything. President Sandy?
Don't you know?
Move adjournment.
A motion to adjourn by Osowski, second by Berg. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, we are.
My name's Naomi, I'm a law student.